We'll call the meeting to order if everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the August 2021 meeting of the Ironicoid Zoning Board of Appeals. Couple of announcements and information before we get underway. First, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a common orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevators. Use either the north or the south stairs to exit the building. Meetings are being recorded. Our secretary Donna tonight for the purpose of a record in minutes, but not for a verbatim transcript. So to help her identify in her notes who is speaking at which time when you come to the podium, it's very important that you speak clearly your name, address. Then take a moment to pause so I can have you raise your right hand and be sworn. And then after that, the applicants can present their case. After the applicant, well, while the applicant is presenting their case, the zoning board members may engage in a discussion or have questions for the applicants. Once that process has all been completed, then we open it up to public input. We've identified three categories of public input so far, and we take them in this order. Those who wish to speak in favor of the application, those who wish to speak in opposition to the application, and those who don't have a position on the application, but want to talk to us about something related to the application, like chickens or corner lots and fences and the kinds of things that come up regularly here, but don't have an opinion as to that particular application. Those are, that's the last category. And if anyone can think of a fourth category, we'll add that one too. Once the public input portion has been concluded, we give the applicant an opportunity to address the board again and to discuss any things that were raised during the public input portion. And once that process is completed, then the case is closed and we move on to the next case on the agenda. We call the cases in the order that they appear on the agenda and extra copies of the agenda are on the table by the door. After all the cases have been heard, the board takes a short recess and then we return to deliberate the cases, not in the order that they appear on the agenda necessarily, but in the order that they appear on the agenda and for which the applicant is still present. So if the first applicant has left and the second applicant is here, the second applicant's case will be deliberated on first and we go down the agenda that way. Then back to the top for the applicants that have left and till we complete deliberation on all of the cases. There's no further input allowed during the deliberative portion unless it's specifically requested by a member of the board. You don't have to stay for the deliberative portion of the meeting if you don't wish to. You're welcome to if you'd like, but you don't have to. If you don't wish to stay, but you're interested in knowing what we did, you can rush home and turn it on. I think it's on channel 1300 if you have cable. I'm also told that somehow you can do it, watch it on live on Facebook. And there's probably some other electronic means that it's broadcast on. We tend to be quite popular, I think. And or you can call the town hall tomorrow morning after nine o'clock. Ask for the zoning and planning department and they'll be glad to tell you what we decided. Before we get underway with the matters on the agenda, I would just like to, for those who may not be aware, one of our members, Sean Hart, has resigned from the board because of a conflict between his work schedule and participating in the board as he would like to have been able. And so tonight we welcome Mr. Gorman, who's our alternate member of the board. And hopefully Mr. Elliott will join us in the near future, so we have a full complement tonight. But I think that covers everything that we need to cover.
Okay, the first case for August 2nd to 2021 zoning board meeting is ZB 2021 08-1. Upon the matter of request by James Reed and Bernadette DiAmato for area variance direct to six foot high side yard fence on premises 27 Holly Mount Road in an R1 residential district.
Hi, my name is Bernadette DiAmato and I live at 27 Holly Mount Road.
And if you'd raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
My husband and I fairly recently moved to Rochester. I teach right behind where I live at Briarwood, teach third grade. And we are semi-new to the area and the community here. We are raising two little ones and because of that, we are looking to extend our fence for security and privacy. The variance specifically as far as six foot privacy fence that would extend 14 feet past the rear foundation. However, it would not come up all the way to the front of our home. There would still be eight feet. The reason we're requesting those 14 feet is because it also provides privacy for three focal windows and covering those, especially as that's a room where our children are often playing. So again, just to provide that safety primarily outside, but also that adds a little, a little bit of a safety and privacy feature for the interior of the home.
If I understand correctly, the fence, the line of the fence facing the street will be at the same distance setback from the main part of the house as the garage, is that right?
A little bit further back because the garage comes up and then it's like, I think that's like four, five-ish feet. I, I, and I could be wrong. My husband wrote this up. He's home giving the babies a bath and so we had to switch quickly. So he's the expert, but if that's what you're seeing in the paperwork, then yes. But I know that there is the eight feet.
Okay.
There's that, hope that.
But it'll kind of like even off the front of the house?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And it's connected to a fence that we have in the back. We are not putting a fence on the right-hand side of the yard as we have privacy shrubs that run right, pretty much right into that fence and that kind of keeps it secure. So we don't lose track of our kiddos.
And it looks from the survey as if there's already a fence there?
Correct.
That's the neighbor's fence?
Yes, and that was put before us.
Right.
Recently moved, that has to be torn out anyway because it's actually on their property line.
Okay, so it was your fence?
It, yes, the man before us put it in, but our neighbor who we're very close with, she was fine with it. But when she, you know, heard about us putting in a new fence, she just reminded us, hey, let's make sure it is on your line.
Yeah.
So it will be pushed in a little bit.
That's the way those things are usually resolved.
Yes.
So you're going to put in the six-foot fence from the back line all the way up to the line that you've shown on the map?
Yes, correct.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That is all.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
What kind of fence you doing?
A wood, six foot.
Like a dog ear or a stockade or?
Correct, dog ear, correct, yes.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody who'd like to talk to us about fences or anything else related to, but not in favor or against the application? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. Thank you very much.
Next case, ZB 2021 08-2. Upon the matter of request by Doug and Ann Fields for area variances to erect a four-foot-high semi-private front yard fence exceeding maximum allowable height and non-conforming fence type and to erect an open pergola on existing dock with less than required front setback on a waterfront property on premises 317 Bayfront Lane North in an R3 residential district.
Evening, I'm Doug Fields and I live at 317 Bayfront Lane North.
Not sure if I'm going to speak, but I'm Ann Fields and I also reside at 317 Bayfront Lane North.
If you'd both raise your right hands, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight, if you say anything tonight, will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we're here for two issues. One, we want to replace a fence. We have a fence bordering a property to the south of us that was a chain link fence, runs from the break wall back up to a certain point at the, probably the back of our home. And just to make clarity, we are in the water, so the front of our house, as I referred to, is the waterside. So the chain link fence would run from the water back to the back of our house. That fence is our neighbor's fence and it had been removed mainly because of some extensive landscaping that he's doing. We originally spoke with him about replacing it with another fence that, you know, looks nicer and so forth. And in midstream, he felt that maybe he could accomplish that with some landscaping. So he's a single man and he's really just looking for scenery, bordering. Us, we have a young dog. We're looking more for containment and something that looks nice as well. We do have in your papers there, you do have a letter of his support for this project. He is well supportive of it and actually willing to help us with the, the expense of it. What we want to do is replace it with a fence that will be within the same footprint of the exist, of what was existing, using the same positions of posts going back through. And we do have in your packet, the type of fence that we want to put up. We originally thought a height of anywhere between four and five foot, but we kind of settled on the four foot. Make it a little bit more easy to get approval from you folks. And that would also accomplish what we want is dog containment plus aesthetics. We want it to look nice. So we have, the posts will be metal posts bearing on concrete. And then in between will be a non-wood material, but a composite material going between on a horizontal, leaving a gap in between. We've kind of designed it to leave about an inch and three-quarter gap to allow airflow in between and just make it look much nicer. We were instructed by you folks to get DEC approval and we have, we have that. I, I don't know if there's any really an official form from that, but there is a response to my email, which looks official. We have 12 copies. You don't need 12 copies here, but we'll hand those out there. They have approved that to go ahead and proceed in the, within the same footprint.
You give that to Ms. Martello, that would be great.
The second project is to erect a pergola on top of our dock. We do have a rather large dock out on, in the, in the front of our property. And there's one section that is of the dock anyway, is roughly 15 by 13. And we're looking to erect a pergola that would have a footprint, overhead footprint of 12 by 14. This would add to the aesthetics, I think, of, of our yard. We have gone through 2017 and 19 floods and our yard has been nothing but improvement ever since. And we want to continue in hopes that to bring it back to what we would like and always had dreamed of when we bought the place nine years ago.
Is this going to be in the area on the dock where the chairs are now? Or I should say?
No, that's to the north. There's more, there's, if you were down recent, well, they've been there for a while. There's actually a very small table and just four chairs sitting around it. It's more of an empty section. The other section has blaze chairs and, and.
No, but that's where the pergola is going to go, right? Where the table was?
Where the table is, yeah, to the, to the south, yes. To the south of the finger going out.
Right.
And so, you know, that was a concern that it would be, you know, maybe objectionable to our neighbors from a view standpoint and certainly we're actually mainly to the one south of us. And he's in total support of it. Again, you have that letter of his, his support. So that's what we would like to do. We do have the approval, if you will, or the, the go-ahead from the DEC regarding the fence. Regarding the pergola, I am surprised that they didn't push that through first because in my initial phone calls with that, well, you're just adding something to your dock. That doesn't really involve us. That's, you know, that's, that's kind of okay. But that is a second issue with them that must be on someone else's desk and they are very busy and they haven't gone through. But I do suspect that we'll get that also with flying colors, but I don't have that this evening.
All right. Any questions, comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody who'd like to talk to us about pergolas, fences, DEC, anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to the next case. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
And you also, ma'am.
Okay, next case, ZB 2021 08-3. Upon the matter of request by Samantha Pap for area variances to erect an eight-foot-high solid fence in rear and side yards and to erect a 4.5 foot to six-foot-high side yard fence exceeding maximum height allowable on premises 44 Raleigh Road in an R1 residential district.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
I'm Samantha Pap. I'm the owner of 44 Raleigh Road. I don't know how, how I'm supposed to start, I'm sorry.
And the gentleman with you, is he going to be speaking?
My name is Michael Pap, resident of 52 Pinecrest Drive. Also Samantha's father here to help her.
Okay, if you'd both raise your right hands, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight or may say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
My main, my main objective with the, the height on the fence is just to prevent. There's a, it's a very close quarters over there. I'm sure you've seen the pictures. There's just this one step down, so it's, it's between two and three feet of a grade. So really, when you're in the higher part of the yard, it, the fence, putting up a six-foot fence would really be like a four-foot fence.
My concern is, I, I went and I looked at it. I talked to your neighbor. Have you talked to your neighbor?
I, I've had a chance to talk to Irv, but I haven't had a chance to talk to either Kim or, I'm sorry, I forget the, uh, Kim.
Because they're, they're very concerned about an eight-foot wall next to their property.
Right.
And what I, as I explained to them, you have an absolute right under the zoning ordinance to put up a six-foot fence along the line up to the back line of, of the house. And, and that you don't need a variance for. I can't recall us approving in the past an eight-foot fence. And I cannot quite frankly, understand the need for an eight-foot fence. And I understand why you want to wrap it up and tie it into where the addition on the house comes out. That makes sense, similar to the Holly Mount application of coming up and doing it. It's almost identical except for the orientation of the two houses. But I, I cannot wrap my arms around an eight-foot fence.
It's mostly because my daughter, she, from, I'm just afraid because their deck is so high and they, they do have a dog.
And let me ask you one other thing. What, did you look over the factors that we take into account? The last factor is the self-created hardship. Now, I know that you haven't been there for more than maybe two months because I was through the house for the estate sale that they had there earlier this year. So when you bought the house, what is different now than when you bought the house?
The dog, the dog that's outside.
What dog?
Their dog.
Okay, does their dog come into the yard?
No, but they don't have a fence and my daughter will cross that border no problem. If she sees that dog, she will go for the dog.
So does she climb six-foot fences?
Um, if she, if, if it's really, there's a two-foot retaining wall, so really it's a four-foot fence. So if she has.
Well, down at that level, it's a six-foot fence.
I think the, if I could say something here, the big thing is it is a corner lot.
Oh, I'm all aware of the corner lots.
The problem with the corner lot is the area that's available for you using, you know, to enjoy yourself or sit down.
Agreed.
It's on a three-foot lower grade.
Oh.
So the, the problem is it's mostly for privacy is what the eight-foot would be. I mean, right now, the neighbor could stand on his deck and look right over a six-foot fence like it's not even there. Where an eight-foot would achieve a small, the yard consists of about 30 feet of area that's usable yard. Other than that, there's no backyard. And to put a dining room or a set or a table or something that we're, we're stuck to sit there and have six-foot fence, you're still not getting any privacy.
Nothing has changed from when you bought the house?
No, nothing has changed.
So that was all there when you bought the house?
Correct.
Right.
Instead of an eight-foot fence, you could also excavate that area that's higher and move it closer to the road so that you have a more privacy in the yard area by lowering that higher portion of the yard.
It's really, it's really a small area though. I mean, the amount of privacy fence you're seeking to change from six foot to eight foot is about 24, 30 feet.
But not even that, I would be willing.
Three and a third percent increase in the height of the fence. And it takes from being a fence that's characteristic of other fences that are in the neighborhood and turning it into a wall. And, you know, there's a reason for the six-foot height in the zoning ordinance. And there are reasons why we're empowered to grant variances. But one of the factors that we are charged with carrying out is to only grant the variances to the extent that they are needed by the homeowner to balance against the interests of the town in the zoning ordinance and the neighborhoods that the properties are sitting in. And I have no problem, as I said, understanding why you want to come further north and wrap it into the back of where the addition is on the house so that that gives you more usable area that's fenced in and private. But I, I just cannot get to the eight-foot fence.
It's really not usable area over there. Anything past the backyard there is not really usable. It's.
Then why do you need to fence it in?
The thing so that, you know, my granddaughter, who's young, three years old, will see over there and try to go over there. Where eight-foot would solve that problem.
How does an eight-foot fence make it more usable than what's usable now? You're just telling me that that area that I'm talking about isn't usable?
From their deck and from their house, without their fence, they could look right into her kitchen when she's doing dishes. It's that close. It's, it's that close where, you know, you, you're kind of like, you feel like you're living in a fishbowl. And when you're sitting out there on the deck or the concrete pad, if you would, you know, you don't have any privacy at all in your own, in your own yard.
Well, it's a fishbowl, right? And again, we're, I'm going back to the fact that you bought this house two months ago, right?
Yeah, it wasn't that many available in Ironic. I wish there was more, but there wasn't. But we really were shooting for Ironicoid.
Well, the, the problem is that, you know, you bought this house with the open yard, with the elevated deck next door, with the patio next door, with your daughter who has, you know, the issues that you raised in, in the letter that are, you know, being offered in justification for this. And I'm very sympathetic to all of that, but I'm not sympathetic to this eight-foot at all.
I have a question.
The six-foot, they're still going to be able to see the dog chained on a 10-foot chain and that's going to distract her. I know it's going to, it's going to, it's going to warrant her going that, that direction. So that's, that's what our, our main concern is privacy and having a, a small area that's private, I mean.
I, I have a question. So in regards, I, I know that it was described that the, the, the wish was to have an eight-foot solid fence. Would there be any alternatives to a solid fence at that height? Would there be one that you feel would, would have a similar safety effect? Or, or is it really?
Semi-private or something? No, I think she wants privacy in something solid.
It's not, I don't, I don't really care. You can look into my kitchen, I don't care. I don't want her to get to that dog because as soon as she gets that dog, she will be aggressive with that dog. Every time she has the opportunity to, she is aggressive with the dogs and they will end up biting her. And if something happens to my kid because I warned you about it.
Well, that goes me back to the six-foot versus eight-foot. She can't cross through a six-foot fence anymore than she can through an eight-foot fence.
She can see over it and it will, I am just asking, I will be willing to just do where the patio is. I'll bring it in if I have to, but I.
Where you're sitting there.
It's not.
You can see me on a six-foot, you wouldn't be able to see me on a six-foot fence.
Please stop.
Uh huh.
But the man, the six-foot fence, you could still see.
So, and then if, if we have another situ, if we have another situation where there's a three or a four-foot, are we going to be asked to approve a 10-foot or a 12-foot fence? I mean, this is the, this is, it's the two feet that's the variance. That's what I have a problem with. That's what I'm looking for. You to explain to me why your hardship justifies allowing you to put a 10-foot fence where, or a six-foot, eight-foot fence where the town only allows a six-foot fence for everybody else?
Because of the difference in grade from the front of the property to the back of the property.
Ironicoid is not a flat community.
I am more.
I mean, the grade is, is such that there's a three-foot difference probably from the front to the back. I haven't put a chance at or anything on it.
Regardless of the grade, regardless of anything, the dog is left out often and it has an electric fence, which is fine for the dog, but that doesn't do anything for my baby who constantly sees and hears the dog. If she's up on the top of the yard, she'll be able to see right over the six-foot fence, which I'm going to put up regardless, but I'll have to plant a tree or something if it doesn't work. And I'm just hoping to God that she doesn't get over there to see it because it's, regardless of the privacy, it's, it's the, the height of the deck is, is two stories. And I'm a story and a half down already. So even on the top part of it, we're like, the deck is up here and the regular grade is down here. And then when you're down here, it's just, I get it, I get what you're saying with the grade of the yard. And that's not, I guess it's not your thing. But my concern is can I just do, can I just do one portion of it and I'll step it up to right there where the deck is? It's, I don't, your deck is not that big. I mean, maybe 12 by 12. Can I do one panel so that when she's in the top yard, she can't see down into it?
Now you're suggesting an alternative that we have, don't have in front of us.
Well, I said.
So if you'd, if you, you, well, let me, let me finish. You've heard some of the things that at least two of us have to say. I don't know, I don't speak for anybody other than myself. If you'd like to go back to the drawing board and come up with a different proposal than an eight-foot fence running all across that line, we'll be glad to discuss that. we'll be glad to discuss that and see if that is a better balance than what you're proposing tonight. You have two options tonight. You can proceed with the application the way that you have submitted it and we'll either grant it or deny it. And if we deny it, then you can't come back to us for a year. Or you can wait till September and put your mind to what you wanna have as possibly some alternative and see if that's going to be, uh, something that we might feel more comfortable with. See, it's up to you, it's entirely your decision.
I, I have a question, and maybe it's for the planning board, uh, person as well, but, I mean, is it possible to just go with the six-foot permit and put a retaining wall there so that the, 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 the lot is leveled and the retaining wall doesn't exceed any other higher part of the lot? Cause I've, I've seen that a hundred times in Arondiquay and I've installed many fences after they built the retaining wall to bring up the two-foot to the grade that is existing and then the six-foot fence is put on it. I mean, that would, that would, that would do the same, that would solve the same problem as far as getting up, you know, out of the view of the dog and, and what's going on over there and is that an option? I mean, is that a?
Well, that would need a variance too, but it would be a different variance for sure, cause you still have to measure from the natural grade of the earth. But maybe that would be looked at differently, cause impact might look different on the other side, I mean, I don't know. Obviously, you would, if that's one of your proposals for September, you could put that down, the board can consider it, but you would still need a variance.
There's hundreds of those in Arondiquay and I could, I could talk to you, show you them, permits have been pulled, we've installed them.
I know the one that we had that was on Lake Shore Road several years ago was denied. They wanted an eight-foot fence for many of the same reasons that you do fronting onto Lake Shore. Then they wanted to put a berm up and put the fence on top of the berm and they were told the same thing, that it gets measured from the natural thing up to the top, so you can put a berm. If you put a berm up that's four feet, then you can only have a two-foot fence.
I mean, this, this grade, the natural grade over there is higher with exception of that portion of the yard. That is probably fifteen percent of the entire property and that is the area that is, is three feet lower than the rest of the grade. That's why, that's why we're, we're coming to you for the, for the variance i- in the first, in the first place. The, the rest of the yard is, is higher by two to three feet at least. It's only one small portion that it's lower.
Well, it's half the yard, but still, like I, I, I had put a picture and that said, neighbor's side stepped fencing, option two. That's what I meant by stepping it in that one area or two areas, whatever area I can. Just where the patio is.
That's it, she doesn't need, she's not, I guess what we're saying is we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna clear what we're really asking for is the portion of that hundred and twenty-five foot line, we're only asking for, give a distance on there. I'm gonna say twenty-four feet of the hundred and twenty-five line there, that's, that's in, uh, green. Twenty-four feet, which is directly into her backyard.
The area between the north edge of the garage and the south edge of the concrete patio?
Correct.
Or up to the back of the house, which?
Uh, I would say to the, the, the back of the house would be fine, like you said, that's fine, they should look in the window.
Again, that's something that I'd have to, for me personally, I'd have to go back, look at it again and.
We're fine, I mean, that's the only portions you really need, I mean, we're not trying to put up an eight-foot wall here between the neighbor, we just moved in here, we, we get that, but this portion of the land is so much lower, I think without the.
When you say that that's not what you're trying to do, but that's, understand from our perspective, that's your application. The application is we wanna run an eight-foot fence that hundred plus whatever feet it is all along there, that's the application that we have. Now, tonight, you're saying, well, you know, I'm willing to compromise, we could do this, we could do that, but we don't have those proposals in front of us that we can go down as we did. We went down, we looked, we walked along there, we talked to the neighbors, we looked at the back, we looked at the, uh, step up and where it is and, and I get it. But now you're talking something different, which I may not, and the rest of us, I don't know how the rest of us feel again, I only speak for myself. But I have a real problem with an eight-foot wall running along there. Now, if you want it, if we want, you want us to consider something different from that, I'm open to that. But that, we don't, can't do that tonight because we only meet once a month. And we, we got, we get presented what we get presented with and that's what we react to. So, if, if there's changes to come down the pike, I mean, that's part of what, you know, what's the least amount of variance that we can grant that will balance the needs of the neighborhood and the homeowners, that's what we look at. So, it would necessitate coming back in September and submitting a revised or a couple of revised, cause you've mentioned at least two, uh, different things potentially tonight, two potentially different plans. Uh, and again, going up to the, I don't think there's any problem going up to the uh, wall of the, uh, the addition in terms of bringing it to the north and you having that area uh, behind the addition fenced in, um, that's similar to what the first application tonight was. So, you know, if you wanna continue with that or if you wanna change that, but I think this needs, from my perspective at least, this needs a little more refinement.
I, I mean, I guess I'll push it, I just, I didn't receive the one that said option two on it or the one that said option with this decorative topper.
Well, we're not, I, I don't have anything from your plan as to tell me how many feet of that you're proposing or anything, what I, what I was.
Uh, we could redo that and draw, we could get an actual measurement, I apologize, we just haven't had the time to put it into.
And I'd also suggest that you talk to your next-door neighbor. I mean, they have, they have some concerns.
They're, they're suggesting that we do a open fence, like an ornamental fence, they are beautiful and.
And I understand that that's, kinda defeats the purpose.
Child from reaching through there.
Oh, I, I get that.
Is, is, is basically running around there, so you need something solid and closed. They also suggested, you know, a plastic fence with some openings, but she wants to go with something wood so that it matches the house, the house was built in nineteen twenty-nine and we're trying to keep it, you know, something that matches that look, you know, and that, that, but that's irregardless, so we'll just have to redraw for the area we want and then go from there and see, and see how that pans out, I mean, I, I don't know. I said the six-foot is, is a no-brainer, we could have already do that, and, and, and.
You can do that under the code starting tomorrow if you'd like, that you don't need a variance for that.
That's what we're asking, is for the small area where the, where the concrete pad is, so that she has privacy. Lot of tax money, a lot of money in these houses, you got a little teeny yard and you like a little privacy there. And you'd also like to make sure that you know that the child's not near the dog, that's what we're asking for, I mean, that's, that's the only part of the yard she has really, everything else is open or outside. So, I mean, it's, you know, it's, I got it, that's what we bought and, and I understand what you're saying on that, but on our side, I mean, there's only so many houses available, we're trying to get into West Arondiquay, this is what we have to work with. So, we're trying to make this area a beautiful place that you could stay in, if we're quarantined again, you're in there and you feel comfortable and you feel like you are, uh, you know, in your private little yard, you know, you're not, uh, you're, you're not, uh, exposed to your next-door neighbor and there's nothing you can do about it. That's why we're using the eight-foot tall fence and the variance that that would provide to, to install that for that, that little twenty by fifteen foot area is all she has available in that yard. Everything else is out front, there's steps and sidewalk, you know, I mean, I, that's, that's what, that's where we're at and we're willing to, you know, take less, we don't need it, there's no rea- reason to go all the way that way or that way with it.
But, but tonight, the option is to either withdraw. Well, dog, we can, we can table it to September.
New one for the next meeting.
Sure, so, I mean, do, do you want me to just, can we just draw on there with another color from, from the end of the house here to, uh, the end of the garage?
Speaking for myself and only for myself, I wanna go and look at the yard again in terms of what you're proposing that you're asking us to do. I looked at it from a perspective of these, this applicant wants to put up an eight-foot wall between her property and the neighbor's property, that's what I looked at. Sitting here tonight, I, I can't say, okay, it's only gonna be for this distance, uh, and it's gonna be, they want eight feet, but it'll be six feet, the rest, I can't sit here and picture that sufficiently to say, yeah, that's okay, or no, it's not.
So, that, can we do that then, we, what, what we're asking to do, it'll, it'll be another month?
Yeah, you don't have to withdraw, just with your consent, we'll table it to September.
Okay, but that's what, just so we know what we're talking about, it's not the entire length of this hundred and twenty-five feet.
What I'm talking about is a concern that I have for an eight-foot fence. Running all along that line, if you only need eight feet for twenty-four feet or whatever, then ask us to approve twenty-four feet and it might be more favorably received.
That's what we're asking.
But I need to, I wanna look at what it exactly it is that you're really proposing, we can't approve something that we don't know.
Exactly what we just, you just said, just that portion between the, uh, garage on the north end and the house on the south end.
You have to modify the application though.
That's fine, I can modify the application and do that. My question is, do you, can you let me know when you're gonna be there so I can show you exactly where it's gonna be or, cause I didn't know you had the.
Yeah, I'll try to, I, I, it depends on what my schedule is for the, usually we come down after we get the packets sometime with a week before.
I can make myself available for you if you can let me know.
Alright, is your phone number on the, um?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so, yeah, I'll call you and let you know that I'm coming and we can talk about it.
Okay.
Okay? Does anyone else on the board have any comments or questions? Since it's advertised for the public hearing, even though you're agreeing that we're gonna table it to September, is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application, step right up.
Thank you for your time.
You know, I would thought, my name's Irving Feldman, I live at sixty-one Dumont Street, behind, um, behind Samantha.
Can you, can you say?
Yeah, Irving Feldman.
I'm sure.
Irving Feldman.
Thank you.
And I'm not for an eight-foot fence, you know, it, she says she wants privacy, but it's a yard, you know, all the other, you know, it's always been open. Um, you know, I have a, a ninety-five-year-old mom who lives with us and she, every morning when she gets up, she's always on the lower deck having her tea and coffee, she just sits out there for a little bit. And with the fence, she's not gonna be able to see anything. But with an eight-foot fence, I could have her up on the top deck, but she would still have a hard time seeing. Um, you know, the neighbors, well, when they just moved the utses, but before, the kids used to be outside playing basketball and stuff and she watched the people walk up and down the street. You know, there's not much that she could do nowadays, but I just don't wanna feel like there's a wall between us. Um, I gave her some suggestions for some other fences, but everything I suggested is that the daughter's gonna get to the dog, stick her hand, but the invisible fence and the dog sounds mean, but it's not a mean dog, it just barks. When someone's walking in the yard, when the Argini is there, the dog barks, when people walk other dogs, he growls and he barks a little bit. But the invisible fence from their property line is about three feet away. So, even if in the dog doesn't go up to the fence, the dog still stays a foot away from the fence, a foot back from where the invisible fence is. So, even if she stuck her hand out of the fence, it would never get to where the dog could go near her. And the dog would, the, we take the dog to our, our cottage, um, on the weekends and the dog won't even, I have to carry the dog from the driveway into the car when I take her car off, cause she's afraid to go over the line in the fence, in the front of the yard. You know, so, you know, if she spent a little time and got to know the dog, if she came over, she would see that the dog's friendly, you know, and not, not bad, but if someone strange comes by and for security, if someone strange comes by, the dog would bark and let you know someone's around. Um, I gave her some ideas of the fences, you know, but she really didn't, didn't wanna listen to it, she wanted a solid fence. Eight-foot, I don't, I don't think a three-and-a-half-year-old could climb over a six-foot fence. I don't think a three-and-a-half-year-old would climb over an eight-foot fence. She was saying how that they have a, a plastic dollhouse there, playhouse, how the daughter would push the dollhouse up against the fence and climb over. You know, I said, aren't you gonna be in the yard? You know, you're gonna be watching the kid, you're not gonna just put the kid in the yard and not pay attention. You know, and that's, that's my concern, you know, I just don't, I just don't wanna be blocked, you know, walled in, you know, so. You know, and I made my suggestions to her and I don't think they cared, so.
Thank you, anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone that'd like to talk to us about fences?
There's two, there's three letters that, um.
That's correct.
Or not.
We received.
Emails.
Received a letter from Kimberly Mathis.
Which is the person who just spoke's, um, household.
Okay, we received a email from an Amelia Galasso, who indicated that she would like to propose fence to remain within the current zoning code and we received an email from Barbara Galasso. Amelia Galasso at forty-eight Dumont Street and Barbara Galasso at thirty-six Dumont Street. Those were the letters that were received. Alright, did you wanna come up and address anything more in light of what Mr. Feldman had to say, or would you prefer to wait till September?
I'll, I'll, I'll address something real quick, um.
Okay.
Just that, you know, we will bring it back to you, we'll, we'll highlight the area and then the same thing, if we know you're coming over, we would love to be there and, and look at it and, uh, you know, and show you, show you why we're asking for the variance, I mean, I mean, um, and then, you know, you can make your decision from there, but, uh, uh, the other thing I wanted to ask is can I put something temporary up there now before we do a fence that is, is easily removable, similar to a garden fence or something? Until that time, so to keep her in the yard and not have her running toward the dog constantly when we're outside.
That you'd have to check with, uh, town on because we don't know anything about what you can do temporarily and that kinda thing, you'd have to check. Just give somebody a call tomorrow morning.
If that's, uh, it's something you can do, a temporary fence while you're waiting for a, uh, application.
We could, we could talk to the director, you can tell us the type of fence, the height of the fence, yeah.
Or do we go as far as getting the application for the regular one and then waiting and seeing if the variance changes it, but in the meantime, we could put something up around the rest of the area that's permanent. I know you wanna get it done quickly. I mean, it's gonna help the sooner we get it up, it's, you know, I mean, you're out there, you're trying to mow and you got kids running and they got nowhere to go but out of the yard.
Well, you could put a six-foot high fence, except for that one portion that the board.
I just wanna put something temporary up, maybe something like, uh, you know, a garden-style fence or something, just to, you know, contain her or slow her down right now and know that.
We could discuss that with the director.
Okay, thank you for your time.
You're welcome, have a good night.
Next ca- next, um, application, ZB twenty-two-one oh-eight dash four, upon the met of request by Marathon Engineering, acting as agent for Element Management Group for area variances to subdivide a parcel into two separate properties, lot one and lot two, with lot one having less than required parking and lot two having less than required front setback lot with lot depth, lot area and parking per dwelling unit on premises twenty-five fifteen Culver Road, assisted living residence and apartment complex in an R five residential district.
Hi, I'm Peter Gorman with Marathon Engineering, we're at thirty-nine Cascade Drive in the city of Rochester.
You swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay.
Uh, the project we're here for today is located at two-five-one-five. Uh, the project we're here for today is located at two-five-one-five Culver Road. Uh, we are proposing to subdivide the property into two different parcels, so a portion of the property we can sold, can be sold to a new owner. Uh, the project is located on the west side of Culver Road and bordered by Brookdale Park to the north, Cascade Place to the west. And Echo Street to the south. Uh, the parcel is zoned R five multifamily residential. Uh, the parcel has two primary buildings on the premises. The northerly building, uh, here. Uh, is, uh, apartment building with forty-two units. And the southerly building, southerly building functioning, is functioning as an assisted living, living residence with one hundred units.
What about the other buildings that are further south that? Yeah, I.
That's not on our property. I believe those are apartments, but those are not on our parcel.
They're not connected to the whole project?
Uh, no, sir.
Oh, okay.
But they have the same address.
They're on a different parcel, though.
I mean, the both.
Reciprocal easement agreement for the other parcel?
There is an access easement, yes, coming out of Echo Street here.
Just the access?
It's, uh, yeah. What's that? I'm sorry, sir.
Does the, uh, does it have anything for parking?
No, their parking lot is actually located on their own parcel here. So this is the parcel line here that goes down. So their, their parking is located on their own parcel, it's just the driveway. It's a shared driveway with an ingress, egress easement.
Then which lot is it that is looking to be sold? Uh, the yellow or the green?
The yellow is gonna be sold.
Yellow is gonna be sold, okay.
Yes, sir.
Which is the apartment complex, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Uh, so the objective of this project, as I said, is to separate the apartment building from the assisted living facility for sale to a new owner. Uh, we have no site improvements, uh, as a part of this project, so the facilities will look and operate in the same way as they do today. Uh, as a result of the subdivision, the main entrance for the apartments will be from Culver Road. And the main entrance for the senior living facility will be off Echo Street to the south. Uh, a blanket cross-access easement and parking easement will be granted to and from each parcel. Uh, this will create legal access and parking to each parcel, no matter which entrance is used. Uh, it's, uh, essentially there, you either use or can come in at either entrance, there'll be a blanket easement.
Alright, so you. Cause if, if you're blocking off. The entrance from Culver for the assisted living, it seems to me you're putting a tremendous potential. Traffic burden on Echo Street. But you're saying they'll, you'll still be able to.
Yeah, the assisted, assisted living facility will have rights to use this entrance.
Okay.
So it'll, it'll act the same way. Uh, it'll just be, you know, on paper, um, that'll be there. And for nine-one-one purposes, that'll be the entrance.
So basically, this is just shifting the fictional lines. And nothing, i- if I go there after the sale, I'm not gonna be able to tell that there's anything different than what's there now.
That is correct.
Okay.
The, what is the status of the reciprocal easement agreement?
Uh, we have, that's not in place yet. We're waiting for approval for the subdivision first, for these variances to move forward, but. By the time we file the maps, it will be in place.
And that would all be done as part of, before the sale, so that it's the same owner of both parcels would sign off on?
Correct. We, in order to subdivide, it still has to be under the same owner, so we can't do that until.
Alright.
The sale can't happen until there's a subdivision.
Alright.
So all the, all the cross easements and, uh, access agreements will be part of the deeds?
Correct.
To the two parcels.
Correct. And that, that can be a condition of approval if you guys would like to put it that way.
And many of these variances are. Technical details because of the shape of the lots, not necessarily.
That is correct. Yeah, there, there's no, there's no site improvements. We're not changing, not physically changing a single thing on here. Um, a lot of it is just, you know, the, the, the setback, the front setback easement for this building now. Um, is right here. And right now, that's a side setback which we meet, but because of the front will now be off Echo Street, that becomes a front setback. So it's really just, just paperwork and, um, you know. Basically making these legal so the sale can go through.
It's like those things of whether the dress is gold or.
Right.
Or whatever the other color was.
It was blue.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so as I said, the daily use and operations remain the same. There's no physical changes, so there's no impact to the surrounding community or, or neighborhoods. Um, the, uh, the six total variances, if you want me to run through them real quick, for lot one. Uh, which is the apartment unit, and the yellow up there. Uh, sixty-two parking spaces are provided, where eighty-four are required by code. Uh, for lot two, which will have the assisted living facility.
Has there been any issue with parking there at all now?
There is not, no, sir. Uh, for lot two, seventy-eight parking spaces are provided, where one hundred spaces are required by code. Um, the second variance, twenty-two hundred square feet of land area per unit is provided, where three thousand is required. Um, as I mentioned before, the front setback of twenty-nine feet is provided, where fifty is required, and that's due to the side setback being turned into a front setback. Um, the lot width is thirty-five feet at the entrance for lot two, so that is right here. But it quickly goes in this section here. Uh, it's nearly four hundred and thirty feet, so it's really just a short section of the property that. That doesn't meet the code. Um, and then the lot depth at its shortest leg, I'm not actually a hundred percent sure we need this variance, but we thought we'd include it. Um, the lot depth at its shortest leg is seventy-two feet, and that's this section right here. But the overall depth of the entire lot is, uh, nearly eight hundred feet, so we wanna make sure we got that in, if that was gonna be required.
Um, how long have these buildings been where they are now?
Uh, I don't actually know the answer to that.
I, I could tell you they were there in nineteen eighty-three when I was commissioner, so they've been there a while.
I know, then they were there for a while by that point. I mean, that.
They've been around longer than I've been around.
Yeah, I mean. I think, I, that's Shire Tenet Culver, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I think that was there when I moved here in sixty-four, so.
And there was a recent fire there, wasn't there? Like within the last year? Wasn't there a fire over there? I'm pretty sure there was. There was an evacuation and there was something going on. Yeah.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that.
Yep.
I didn't know that either.
Alright.
Um, so all these variances requests are really pre-existing conditions. Um, we're not changing anything physically again. So there'll be no impact to the neighborhood or no noticeable change to any of the residents surrounding. Um, that's my presentation. Any questions or?
Anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about shifting lot lines and subdividing and how long things have been there? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. Thank you.
Next case, last case, ZB twenty-two-one oh-eight dash five. Upon the matter of request by Sonburn Sales Inc. for area variances to construct a four thousand two hundred thirty-two square foot. Burn Dairy retail store with less than required rear setback on premises twenty-one eighty East Ridge Road in the C business district.
It's interesting seeing the different easements they bring with it.
I have an extra one if you need to, in the back, do you need? Good evening, my name is Christian Bernal, uh, executive vice president for Burn Dairy. Address is one seventy-one Route Five, Wheatport, New York, one-three-one-six-six. Uh, good evening, I'm in front of you.
Raise your right hand?
Never had to do this before.
If you'd, do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. We had a case probably about eight or ten years ago where. The applicant made representations to us about certain facts. Things that had been granted, permissions and other things that we relied on in making a decision and found out. Four or five months later that those were not accurately related. And, but we were told that there was nothing that we were able to do at the time because nobody. It was just a discussion, there was no, no sworn allegations or anything, so the. Uh, solution I came up with that, for that was, we'll swear everybody in, all the applicants, and that way, if they misrepresent anything. There are potential remedies available that weren't available before, so that's the origin of that. I think it's the only board in the county, maybe the state, where we do that, but we, when we see a problem. We try and come up with a solution to rectify the problem, so that's the reason.
You are correct. I've been in over fifty, fifty-some of these stores, uh, or my twenty-seven years, and I've never had to do this before, so that's why I was kind of.
Yeah, the only ones that are exempt are attorneys, because they have a different ethical code. They're getting bigger trouble if they misrepresent anything.
Well, again, good evening. Thanks for that explanation. Curiosity on that. Uh, in front of you tonight, or everyone knows, is the old Yarandacoy Library, uh, located at twenty-eight eighty. East Ridge Road, uh, on the northeast corner of East Ridge and Ridgewood Drive. Uh, the parcel is approximately one point six acres. Uh, a three hundred and twelve feet of frontage on East Ridge, two hundred and fifty-one foot of frontage on Ridgeway. Uh, the existing Yarandacoy Library, I think it was probably built in the seventies, I believe, from the abstracts, maybe late sixties. Uh, so this is the existing survey there. This is where the building sits today. Okay, I just wanted to highlight that, cause it's hard to see. That highlight line is the property line. That is the east property line of the site. This right here is Wegmans, okay? I'm sure everyone knows that. Wegmans is approximately, I believe, around ten feet from the property line. This existing building sit, sits four point four feet, which is four, four feet, three inches. From the, this east property line as it sits today, okay? And as it sat for the last thirty, forty, fifty years, okay? So, so it's been there, okay? So everyone understands that real quickly? Just wanted to show that. So what I've done here is, uh, that's crooked, but what I've done here is I've superimposed an aerial with a site plan. Okay, as you will see, our parking spaces are almost identical to what's there now. The driveway we're proposing, I'll put the site plan up in a minute, is the exact same driveway. As you, everyone knows, there's an opening here on East Ridge and that's where it has to be, right? So, we're proposing to reuse the existing drive. It's already been submitted to MCDOT, of course. Uh, the building location, as you can see, sits almost on top of the existing building. However, it is eleven feet, and that's where my area variance for a rear yard is, okay? So, current one is four feet, three inches. I'm proposing eleven feet, okay?
I'm sorry, where, where's the four point four versus eleven?
Uh, four point four is the existing.
Yeah, but i- i- is that the east line or the north line?
This is the east right here.
East line, so you're gonna expand it by another seven feet, roughly?
Six and a half feet. We're moving it further off the east property line, so we're, we're bettering, if there's, you know, if there wasn't. If there was an area variance, which I don't think there was, maybe there was, uh, but yes, it would be better than six and a half feet. We're further away from the east property line, okay? So everyone understands, I just wanted to show the aerial and how it sits on the site, right, where. I mean, it's, it was pretty weird. I didn't do this, the parking spaces and everything sat, you know, perfectly. Uh, so that's that. Now I'm gonna throw up the site plan. Everyone's got a gist of that. Here's a clean site plan. As you see, you can see this, uh, this is the eleven feet I'm talking about, along this east property line. You can see Wegmans right here, shown here. Just to let everyone know, this right here is the Wegmans delivery area. Or tractor trailers. I believe there's three or four. I was by there, I looked at it. There could be, there's three or four backup docks right there, okay? And I imagine they were put there for a reason, okay? Uh, the only thing along here is a solid wall with no windows. Uh, there is no fence there, it's just wide open right now and currently mowed, okay? Uh, again, the building will be shifted further to the west by six and a half feet than the current one's there, okay? Uh, what's kind of unique about this site i- i- is a few things, is the zoning, is it's a corner lot, as everyone knows. Uh, so I met with Carrie when I first was looking at this lot. I had my thoughts on setbacks, she had her thoughts. Uh, this lot has two front yards, as labeled on this site plan. Per your zoning, per street frontage, you have to have fifty-foot setbacks, so follow me with this one. This is a front yard along East Ridge. This is a front way, uh, front yard along Ridgeway, okay? This is considered, right here, a side yard. This is considered a rear yard. Which generally, when you look at this, I looked at the main road, as you all would agree, is, is, uh, uh, East Ridgeway. You would say, front, side, side, rear. Generally, it's depends on zoning's written. Again, this one's front, front, side, rear. In your zoning, as you guys know, that's why I'm here tonight, rear yard is sixty foot. So if this was really the rear or back here, there'd be no variance needed, if it was typical, but Carrie dictated that to me. I said, just tell me how you usually do it. And I will design it to the best of my ability, okay? I thought it should be front, side, side, rear. She said, no, this is the way it's gonna be. I agreed with her, okay? Uh, so that's, that's kind of a unique situation there is, again, it's, it's a sixty-foot requirement. If you looked at it closely, there are some red lines here that I, you know, it's twenty-five foot here, because the side yard is closer to residential. Okay, you can see I have a six-foot high, not an eight-foot high, by the way, fence, along the northerly property line here for privacy. Uh, I was in front of the planning board for a workshop on July nineteenth. They asked for some more trees next to the dumpster enclosure, I've done that. I got some pedestrian accesses right here as well, in this green space. I want people to be able to walk along the sidewalk to get along there without going into traffic and crossing driveways. I also want some pedestrian access over here. I'm trying to keep everyone away from the internal flow. Uh, the driveway's the driveway, okay? When I, when we looked at the site, I knew that's what the driveway was gonna be. So when I designed the site, and I believe whoever designed the site before had the same issue as I had. The driveway had to be there, because MCDOT, that said that's where it has to be, right? Away from the intersection of the center. So in designing this, only made sense to keep the building more towards the front, right, because of the residential in the rear. Keep it more towards the ex, almost exact location it's been, okay? And I had to keep that driveway where it is, cause otherwise, if I move this down any further, you're gonna run right into parking spaces. And that's just a dangerous situation that we don't wanna put people in. Okay, uh, again, it is, the building is situated as close to a very large commercial building, right? I mean, I, I think we'd rather have it close to a commercial building rather than closer to a residential. And again, I, I imagine all these things were discussed probably forty, fifty years ago, and it was, ma- maybe it was, maybe it wasn't, uh. Trying to think of this. Uh, that's about all I have. I'll entertain any questions from the board, I guess.
Yeah, I've got a couple questions, but it's more relating to traffic, which isn't necessarily your application. But what's the traffic count, uh, along Ridge Road there? And how many additional cars do you think will, we put on in the site?
I'll answer. We, we did pr- uh, provide a traffic study to Monroe County DOT and to the town. They do have that. That was requested per them. Let me see, I can tell you, just from my notes, and I can pull it out here. Uh, peak hours, eight to nine, five to six, which is a little unique. Uh. Eighty-five to a hundred and five trips per hour is the peak, okay? Per hour in the morning. Uh, thirty-five to forty-two new per thing. The traffic count, I'd have to look at it, I wouldn't wanna say without looking at it. Uh, I'm guessing it's probably around fifteen to eighteen thousand cars, okay? But what, basically, when traffic and it's in the report, so there's no mitigation, uh, recommended from the traffic engineer, and has been sent. Uh, basically, a Burn Dairy, I'm not gonna say it's a Wegmans, we like to think we are, or a Walmart. We're not a destination, although sometimes I think we may be, but we're not, so we take existing traffic off the, the highway, right? And we, we're just taking, maybe some people will come and take a special trip, but there's not gonna be, you know, thousands of them that come make a special trip to go to Burn Dairy to get the ice cream.
But you're gonna sell gas there, too.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Yes, yep.
They'll come there for that.
We hope. That's why we gotta do both.
And with that drive where it is, I believe, if I'm recalling correctly, there are left-hand. Turn lanes for people that are traveling east who would wanna access.
That little jog right there is a stack lane, you are correct. We'll call it a stack lane for people to get out of the traffic on, uh, East Ridge. That is correct.
Cause I know that's one of the criticisms that I hear regularly about the, uh. Dunkin' Donuts that we approved at, uh, Ridge and, uh, Portland.
Get back up, yes. But that, again, that right there is designed for that lot. You can, you can get over. You don't, you don't block the lane.
Yeah, okay. And the only variance that you need is just to approve that eleven feet instead of what's four point four now, right?
That is correct, sir.
And if I'm recalling correctly. That building's been vacant for what? Four or five? Four, five, six years since the new library?
That is correct, and I believe during that time period, the DPW has used it for several purposes from
Yes.
equipment storage to, there's fenced, there's, there's
Piles of malt shure there.
Malt, sandbags, I've heard.
Mm-hmm.
I know there's some big floodlights out there right now.
We, we used it as an operation center after the fire for two years.
Okay.
Is it gonna be a twenty-four hour, uh?
The proposal right now is for twenty-four hour, three hundred and sixty-five days. All new stores are.
Okay.
And if you really wanna look and see what it's gonna look like, uh, you can drive over to the town of Greece, Maiden Lane and Fetzer right now. Uh, I'm ninety-nine percent done. If I could just get utilities, I'd be open.
Drove by there the other day.
There you go. So this is the same exact concept, right to a T with the fuel and everything. That is twenty-four hours as well.
I haven't seen that one. I, I went to school in Brockport and I saw the one out there, but I think it's a burned dairy out in Brock.
Yes, I redid, uh, Sono- Sedoma's Town Farm Market, which I should've tore the building down and put a new one up, but that's neither here nor there. Uh, but yeah, since same, same, same principle.
So if you're open twenty-four hours and Wegmans stays only, uh, closes from midnight to six, you'll have six hours of unlimited competition.
That is correct. You'll be able to take your kids there and get tire line in the middle of the night, so.
That's, that can be important, though.
Okay. I have four of them. I'm, I'm well aware of it.
Yeah.
Been to a bunch of my burned dairies.
All right, anybody have any other questions or comments for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll open it to, uh, public input. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to the application?
Sir, do you want me to leave this up for her?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir.
Hi there. I'm Larry Randamullin. I live at thirteen Abington Road, which is directly behind this project. And I'm really concerned about having a twenty-four hour gas station in my backyard. Um, I, I bought the house because it's a quiet neighborhood. It was great when the traffic vehicles were there. It was like noisy first thing in the morning, but nothing, nothing at night. And I, I already know that coming out of Ridgewood Drive to get, to go towards Wegmans is a nightmare coming out of that street. And if you add traffic coming out of another burned dairy, it's like your only break is when the light is red and there's nothing coming. Now they're not gonna have a red light to stop them. So it's, it's just gonna be, I think it's gonna cause a real problem with traffic there. As well as, it's like, like I said, my big concern is it's gonna be light twenty-four hours a day with all these big spotlights on and people pulling in to buy gas. And, uh, it's gonna make my backyard a nightmare, really. So that's about all I got.
Did you, um, share your concerns with the planning board at the planning board meeting where this concept was presented?
I didn't know anything about it until I got this in the mail. This is the first indication I've had that.
It really was a workshop. So the first meeting coming up is August twenty-third.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so you should be there.
Because what's, uh, see, we, um, we're different from the planning board.
Okay.
Our issue tonight is whether to allow them to build this building eleven feet from the sideline.
Okay.
Instead of the four point four feet that's there now, or the sixty feet that the town ordinance, under one interpretation, could say they need.
Okay.
That's the only issue.
All right.
So whether it's twenty-four hours, twelve hours, or only one hour a day, uh, doesn't impact that issue for us.
Okay.
But the planning board can, you know, help you with things that they can do, height of a fence, direction of lighting. Uh, those kinds of things are what the planning board takes into account in terms of minimizing or, or muting an impact that, uh, commercial might have on a neighboring residential. That's the planning boards.
All right, I didn't realize. This is like the first thing I've heard about it, so I didn't wanna like skip.
What she, what she's saying is because this is, this is our meeting and they were at a workshop.
Okay.
So the meetings get noticed, the workshops. I'm not sure how you find out about the workshops. You log onto the Tights Town website every few weeks and see what's there.
All right.
Uh, but, uh, I would encourage you to go to the planning board and discuss those also. The other thing, uh, that I would encourage you to, to talk about is talk with their representative who's here, uh, tonight about what your concerns are. And he may be able to, uh, he may have ideas that would allay your concerns. Um,
All right.
The zoning class that I took forty-five years ago, uh, by the guy who wrote the book on zoning, told us that the most important thing in zoning is getting along with your neighbors. So.
All right. All right, and you said it was the twenty-third?
Yes, the, the, the planning board, and they're also going for special use permit to the town board for, to have a gasoline station. And that's August, um,
Seventeenth?
Is that the, is that Tuesday?
I think it's the town board meeting.
August, so that's two other opportunities, okay?
All right, thanks very much.
All right. Anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? Step right up.
Hi, my name is Irene Doctor. Um, I live at eleven Salem Road.
Only applicants.
Oh, only applicants.
What was your street? I didn't catch it.
Eleven Salem Road.
Salem?
Um, so we've been, um, you know, in this neighborhood for over thirty years. And very fortunate to have Wegmans and the library is really good neighbors. Um, I was a little nervous when, you know, Walgreens was moving in, but the front of their, um, you know, the front of their store actually, um, faces the corner of Ridge and Culver. So we hardly hear anything from that. Um, but at night, you know, you can definitely hear the Wegmans sweeping machine in the parking lot. And, um, if the windows are open, you know, you don't know if the person speaking is one street over, two streets over. Our area is super quiet. Um, so I guess my, a- and I understand this is not necessarily the meeting for all concerns, because there are many. Um, but I guess if, um, there are rules that are in place and for some reason there was an exception for the library, um, you know, if we're trying to preserve something in the town, then perhaps if they're asking for this much of a variance and there's supposed to be sixty some odd feet, um, maybe the project's just too big for this space. Um, and that would maybe be something to consider. Um, but other than that, I have many other concerns for the planning board. Um, learning things even tonight about the number of cars, um, hours that it's gonna be busy. I mean, y- you cannot make a left-hand turn onto Ridge Road. Um, if cars start coming back, they're gonna, they're gonna start doing U-turns or they're gonna cut through Worthington and go to the light on Culver. Um, I see a lot of issues with something that busy. Um, I mean, burned dairy is a, it's a really nice store, um, but it attracts a ton of traffic. And having that there twenty-four hours a day, I feel bad for the people on the street right next to it because there will just be light and noise all night long in our entire neighborhood. We'll hear it. Um, we've had people move in, um, you know, new homeowners. A lot of people have put money into siding, new roofs, um, spending a lot of money just keeping up our nice, small, little neighborhood. And I think, I think this will have a really big impact in a negative way. And we have a lot of gas stations on Ridge Road, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about setbacks, gas stations, hours, left turns?
I do. I just wanna say that when the library was built, it was probably a smaller lot. They weren't together. And five feet is a requirement for side setbacks, so that was probably fine and legal. It was a little bit off. And it still is five feet to side. But now that the two, the property's larger, the more narrow portion of the lot is always considered the front and that happens to be Ridgeview. And that's why that's the legal front and parallel to that would be the back, which used to be a side, now it's a rear. Because I believe the lot got larger over the years. They were put together, perhaps.
Okay.
It's a guess.
All right. Anybody else have anything they wanna say? The applicant, would you like to come back up and address anything that was raised?
Yes, I would. I, I've given both my cards to both neighbors. I'm more than willing. I do this all the time is meet with the neighbors to help mitigate. Uh, in regards, we can do, I know it's not in front of this board, I just wanna let them know, we can do restrictions on hours of delivery. I've done that. I'm doing that over on, uh, Fetzer and Maiden. You know, I can restrict the hours of any sort of delivery, you know, seven AM, seven PM. You know, that way no one, you know, there's no excess noise during those hours. You know, I've proposed a fence. I can propose trees. I've done a lighting, lighting plan with dark sky friendly compliant. I can assure them it's zero point zero foot candles on property lines, which I have to meet. And the existing lights there, if you go by there now, are very tall, probably seventeen foot floodlights that were there. I don't know why they had them there. Probably, uh, you could answer that probably for the DPW workers. So the lights I'm proposing are twelve-foot yard lights directional downward. So I can assure you what was there at that time, this will be better. That's it, and I'll try my best to, to mitigate with the neighbors. I, again, I give up my cellphone. I've been doing this twenty-four years. I still talk to all my neighbors. I have a wonderful relationship with over fifty some stores I've built next to in residences. I wanna be a good neighbor. They can call me anytime, day nor, day or night, so I'll work with them as much as possible.
All right, thank you, sir. I will close the hearing with respect to this application then. And the board will be in recess until eight-thirty. All right, so we're a little late getting back, but I see that we have, uh, applicants for twenty-five fifteen, one of the twenty-five fifteen Culver Road properties. And, uh, also for the burned dairy at East Ridge. So we'll take those two first and then we will, uh, go back and do twenty-seven Holly Mount and then three seventeen Bayfront. And forty-four Raleigh has been, uh, postponed through September with the applicant's consent, so we won't do that tonight. All right, um, excuse me, one more moment. I have to get my cheat sheets together here for the. All right, so the first, uh, application for consideration is the, uh, property at twenty-five fifteen Culver Road. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll move that we approve this application as presented, uh, with the following findings. If I can find my cheat sheet. It doesn't appear, this, this, um, subdivision, the one lot into two is not going to create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. Nothing's changing other than the property lines and potential ownership of the properties. Other alternatives that do not require the variance, obviously, is one, not splitting them up and selling the whole place. One which probably isn't a, uh, logical, uh, operation in a sense.
I'm not sure that we'd want somebody who's adept at running apartments, running an assisted living facility.
Well, we sort of have that now, though. Variance is not substantial. The, uh, the, most of, most of the variances are technical due to the layout of the properties and the access roads. And, uh, the parking issues and the access are covered by, uh, access agreements and, uh, shared parking agreements that'll be run with the properties. Uh, there will be no adverse physical or environmental impacts granting this variance. Uh, it is self-created in the sense that, uh, the owner of the property is, is dividing it up so they can make a sale, but it makes sense to do it. And I don't see this as a detriment to granting the variances.
Is there a second?
Second. Yeah, either one of us.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Just so I have it in my record, there, there was a condition that the parking and the access would be shared and filed. But is that what you said on your deed?
Did we discuss having, uh, reviewing the reciprocal easement agreement?
Well, they have to be, meet the approval of the, um, county before the subdivision can be done. So that's subdivision approval is really, but we could make it subject to subdivision approval?
Well, right. I mean, it will, it doesn't have to go to the planning board, but did you, I think you said it's shared parking. I just didn't catch it. You said shared parking and access.
They run with the property.
Right, with both properties, okay.
Right.
I just wanted to hear that.
Yeah, that would be part of the subdivision.
So we'll make that subject to the, if, we'll put this up again. Is there any objection to amending the approval to just simply provide that they meet all the requirements needed for the subdivision of the property?
That's fine.
Including a reciprocal easement agreement.
Yeah.
For access and parking, right?
All right, so the motion carries six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One board member is absent. Next, uh, item on the, uh, agenda is the case pertaining to twenty-one eighty East Ridge Road. This is the burned dairy, uh, application. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I move that we grant the area variance requested.
All right, do you wanna propose some findings?
Yeah, I'll propose some findings. The, uh, area variance requested will not have an undesirable change on the neighborhood. The, uh, the library that was there had a, I think roughly four-foot setback. This is eleven-foot setback. And it's a setback basically to the rear of the Regman, Wegmans, uh, supermarket and their truck docks. Uh, so it will not have an undesirable change to the neighborhood. There's no feasible alternative to the site plan as proposed. Uh, the applicant explained that they tried to relocate the building in different areas, but, um, that this was the best use of the site. So this is, uh, there was no feasible alternative to the proposed variance. Uh, the variance is not substantial. Um, while the setback's gonna be eleven feet rather than the sixty feet required. He did explain the difference between the side setbacks and the rear setback and h- how that played out with the fact that it was a corner lot. And, um, when looking at whether or not a variance is substantial, one factor, um, that has been looked at is whether or not there's gonna be a, an effect on the neighborhood. And again, backing up to, uh, the Wegmans, this variance is gonna have a minimal effect on, um, you know, on the immediately surrounding neighborhood with the, uh, Wegmans to the rear of the site. There's no adverse impact on the neighborhood, um, with respect to the variance. Um, that has been a commercial site for, for quite a while. And, um, And, um, while the variance arguably was self-created in and of itself, uh, the fact that it was self-created is not, uh, determinative of requiring denial of the variance. So I move that we approve the application for twenty-one eighty East Ridge Drive, Aronacote.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions, one member of the board remains absent. The next application before us for consideration is the application of twenty-seven Hollymount Road. This is also a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion that we grant the request as presented by the applicant, based on the following findings of fact. Um, so as far as the change to the character of the neighborhood, uh, there are plenty of, uh, fences, six-foot fences in Aronacote, so the two-foot variance that, uh, they're requesting is not, uh, is not gonna change the character of the neighborhood, nor is it a substantial request. Uh, it's not gonna have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, 'cause it's pretty much in line with, um, the, uh, the line directly, uh, adjacent to the garage on the other side. Uh, it is a self-created situation, but the applicant provided evidence that, um, it will provide safety for her children and, uh, will be a privacy window, or privacy, uh, will also provide privacy for the three of her windows, um, on the, uh, interior, for, uh, within the interior of her home. And based on those facts, um, I request that we grant the application as presented by the applicant.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One member of the board remains absent. Next item on the, uh, before the board for consideration is the application pertaining to three seventeen Bayfront Lane North. There's actually two applications. One is for the fence, and the second is for, uh, the pergola. So, um, we'll do the fence first. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, variance as requested with the following findings of fact. Uh, this will not create any change in the character of the neighborhood. It's a substitution of one type of fence, uh, for a fence that was already existing. Uh, the alternatives that do not require a variance, uh, would be a slightly, uh, lower uh, fence, but that would not be as effective in meeting the, uh, needs of containment that the, uh, homeowner identified for the, um, the dog at the property. Uh, it's not a substantial request. Uh, most fencing is sold in four-foot, um, panels, and it's not uncommon at all. Uh, there's, will be no, uh, negative effect on the physical or environmental conditions. If this is granted the way the, uh, fence is being proposed, there would be gaps between the horizontal slats that would allow for circulation of air and also for, uh, more of an open feeling than would be from a solid, uh, wall. Uh, and it's, uh, not a self-created situation because the fence, uh, deteriorated and had to be replaced. Is there a second?
I'll second. Either one, doesn't matter.
I wrote down Joe on this sheet, 'cause I heard him first. I guess my right ear might be better than my left, I don't know. All those in favor say aye. Any discussion first? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, one member of the board remains absent. Second item with respect to this same property is the application to install, uh, the prefabricated pergola, uh, on the, on the dock. And that would have less than required front setback, because on the waterfront property, the front of the house is deemed to be the side facing the water. And since it's gonna be on the dock, that would probably be, I think, a negative setback.
Probably.
So I'll make a motion that we, uh, grant that variance, um, with, again, I would just reiterate and incorporate by reference the same findings of fact as accompanied the last variance, because essentially it's the same. The only difference is that, um, this is not replacing anything that's existing. It's adding an amenity to the dock, which I believe would actually have the, um, effect of enhancing the appearance of the dock and the property and, and have a positive impact on, on the neighborhood. Does anyone wish to second?
Second.
Um, I just had a quick question about this. Because for the fencing, um, that they did get a response from the, the DEC about, um, determining if, if they needed a permit. It said that, in, in that same email from them, that the permit application was, was pending for the pergola. Did we want to make any note of that?
I just wrote down subject to DEC approval. Good point. Thank you.
Wow. Great minds think alike.
On top of that.
You are. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six votes in favor, no opposed. No abstentions. One member of the board remains absent. And I believe that we need to make a motion to table, since it was tabled, the applicant's consent.
Yes.
I'll move to table, uh, the application pertaining to forty-four Raleigh Road.
I'll second that.
Oh, this is a type-two action for seeker purposes, by the way. Alright, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Um, just, well, I'll talk about it. No, I'll talk about it next time. Forget it. I'll talk about it next time.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, one member of the board remains absent. And that, I believe, now concludes... Oh, wait a minute, was, we didn't have minutes from July in the pack, did we? Okay, alright. Give us something to look forward to in September. Alright, I believe that concludes the, uh, all the items on the agenda, unless somebody else has anything for the good of the board, we are adjourned.